Yeah, it's not on.
Right, there we go. We'll call the meeting to order for Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2025-11 for June 3, 2025. Those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pleasure reasons, please do. Our Father.
Who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil, with thine is kingdom, power, and glory forever. Amen. Amen. But allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertained a motion from council to approve the consent agenda. So move.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Consent agenda passes unanimously. This time, we have three proclamations tonight. First proclamation is to recognize the Mardella High School girls softball team for winning the 1A softball state championship. So, they're here somewhere. I don't know if anybody's seen girls softball or not, but I tell you, myself personally speaking, I'd rather play with the boys, because this is dangerous. They're good.
So, since we got a lot of folks, we'll just, I'll start it over here. I appreciate everybody being here tonight. I'm a proud Mardella warrior. Followed a year behind Coach Charles here. I was in class 2000, so it's really exciting for me, as a proud warrior, to be able to give this certificate. I'll say, by the way, we said a year ago, Coach Charles, I was like, you know, you guys got such great energy, and you're doing so well, that we said we'd see you in a year. And I'm not surprised you're back here. And you guys, you all have done just a fantastic job. So, it is with great pleasure that the members of the county council extend this certificate of recognition to Mardella High School softball team for winning the MPSSAA 1A state championship. We congratulate you on your accomplishments, and know that it's been quite a journey, signed by all the members of the county council, done this third day of June 2025. So, with that, I'd like to welcome Coach Charles, if you'd like to say a few words.
Sure. Thank you all for coming out tonight. Thanks to the council for having us out. This is an outstanding group of student athletes. I'm gonna talk a little bit about their softball accomplishments, but also their off-the-field accomplishments as well. So, this group, over the last three years, has gone 70-5 on the field, 70 wins, five losses. Delaney. Delaney, our lone senior, she's gonna finish her high school career of 86-10 in softball, 86 wins, 10 losses. On top of that, they've won four straight regional titles. They've won two of the last three Bayside Conference championships. They've been to the state semifinals three years in a row, and then we finally got over that hurdle this year, and finished it off with a state championship by coming back from a 3-0 deficit against Catoctin, who, those of you may not know, they had a big-time Division 1 pitcher commit. These girls came back from down 3-0, scored two runs in the fifth, two runs in the bottom of the seventh. Where's Elena? Elena walked it off with a double, with two outs in the bottom of the seventh. So, those are their on-the-field accomplishments, and there's many more that we could talk about all night. But, off the field, they're also excellent. This group, I didn't add it up, but I think everybody on the team's got above a 4.0 GPA. They probably averaged 4...
4.2 average.
Is their average? Thanks, Ms. Heskey. So, they do it on the field, they do it in the classroom. They also give back to the community as well. Just some of the organizations that they've helped within the last year include Santa's Angels, the Sharp Town Carnival, they helped with West Salisbury Little League's Cleanup Day, and they also got a chance to work with the Wycomico County Challenger League, which was a very valuable experience for the girls and athletes as well. So, awesome citizens, couldn't think of a group that's more deserving of holding this trophy right here.
Well, I know we got a big group, but we do want to make sure we get a couple pictures. And I don't know if it's possible, Mr. President, can they come behind you?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, take them. Y'all can come back here.
They're smiling behind the county council?
Do you want us to sit? I don't know. Guess we stay here.
We should probably sit.
All right, let's stay sit. Wonderful. You got enough room? Jack, you got enough room?
I'll see Mr. Butler in the back.
All right.
Okay, everybody look this way, smile.
Count of three, say, "State champions." One, two, three.
State champions!
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Coach, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Next, we want to recognize Jakolia Traor, and I hope I pronounced this correctly, for winning the 3A track and field double state champion in shot, put, and discus.
Come on, Mike.
Just gonna read this thing. Wow.
Got it on.
Good for you. All right. Well, we have a certificate here of recognition to Jakolia Traor of Jameson Bennett High School for winning the 3A track and field double state championship in shot, put, and discus. We congratulate you for all your accomplishments. Thank you. All right.
Great job. Keep smiling. Next, we want to recognize with the proclamation Reese Howard for winning the 2A outdoor track and field state championship in pole vaulting. As I understand, they could not be here, but Shanice Shields is gonna read the proclamation. Paula, were you going to accept it, or Dr. Stolfer, were you going to accept it? Okay, all right.
It's given me pleasure, because track and field was not one of my consciences in high school. All I did was walk and run. The county council, Wycomico County, Maryland, is with great pleasure that the members of the Wycomico County Council extends their certificate of recognition to Reese Howard of Parkside High School for winning the 2A outdoor track and field state championship in pole vault. We congratulate you on your accomplishments, done this third day of June 2025, and was signed by all the council members. And congratulations, Reese, for everything. Wait a minute.
Doctor.
He's a four-time state champion in pole vault.
Reese?
Drinks.
Four-time champion.
On behalf of Reese Howard, just want to thank the council for this recognition. I know the school is very proud of had the opportunity to meet with Reese in the past. He is all about track, but as many of our athletes that are being recognized tonight, he is even as dedicated as he is to be a four-time state champion. He's even more dedicated in the classroom, both with his attendance, behavior, and grades. So, we're very proud of all of our athletes, and we always appreciate the recognition that the council extends. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Before we move on further, I would certainly most like to represent or recognize, if I could, the presentation here of Mr. Stanford Robinson. He's the president of the Mardella Council, and he's been doing an excellent job for many years. Also, 50 years on the fire department?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Yeah. 56, all right.
33 years on town council, more than.
32 on the town council. Joe, he's got us beat. You could combine Joe and I, and you'd still have us beat. So, congratulations. Excellent. Mrs. Hurley, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President. Council members, ladies and gentlemen. We have one change to tonight's agenda, and that is Resolution Number 74-2025, which pertains to a water and sewer plan amendment for Reagan's Run subdivision, has been removed from the agenda this evening. Upon further review, it was determined that the resolution approved by the county council on May 6 already contains the necessary language to support the amendment, so no further action is required by the county council at this time.
Okay.
Okay, we do have four public hearings on the agenda. A public hearing notice was posted on the county's website, and published in the local newspaper for each of the public hearings. The first public hearing is declaring a 1-acre tract of property which adjoins the south side of Conley Mill Road and the east side of railroad as surplus for the purpose of extending a natural gas pipeline. The county executive has recommended that approximately 1 acre of county-owned property be declared as surplus, so it can be sold to Easton Shore Natural Gas for the purpose of constructing a gas pipeline. And we have Mr. Bunky Luffman here, Director of Administration, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. At this time, we hold a public hearing in reference to a surplus property just off of Conley Mill Road. If you have any comments that you'd like to make in reference to this specific surplus, come to the podium, please, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing on the 1-acre tract of property which joins the south side of Conley Mill Road and the east side of the railroad as surplus.
Next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 70-2025. This is amending the fiscal year capital budget to increase the Parsonsburg Library renovations project in the amount of $37,264. The Wycomico Public Library is requesting approval to transfer $37,264 from the library's operating account to the county to cover approved change orders for the ongoing Louis R. Riley Library renovation, and to amend the capital budget to increase the funding for the Parsonsburg renovation project. And we have Mr. Seth Hirschberger here, Library Director, if you have any questions.
This time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution Number 70-2025. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this specific resolution, come to the podium, please, state your name, your county of residence, and your concern. This concludes the public hearing on Resolution 70-2025. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 70-2025. Second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Joe? I'm gonna have to recuse myself due to my wife's donation on this library. Okay, so noted. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 70-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously with one abstention.
I think the next public hearing is on Resolution Number 71-2025. This is to authorize rate and price increases for the Department of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism. This is a request from the Department of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism to increase the rates and prices for various programs and facilities. The increases will support the continued maintenance, improvement, and operation of recreational programs and parks throughout the county. If adopted, the new rates and prices will become effective July 1, 2025.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. This time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution Number 71-2025. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing on Resolution 71-2025. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 71-2025. Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution 71-2025 passes unanimously.
Next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 72-2025. This is approving the schedule of fees and charges provided by the Wycomico County Department of Public Works Solid Waste Division to increase tipping fees. This is a request from the Wycomico County Department of Public Works to increase tipping fees from $78 per tonne to $84 per tonne, effective July 1, 2025, and to further increase it to $88 per tonne, effective January 1, 2026.
This time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution 72-2025. If you have any comments that you'd like to make in reference to this specific resolution, come to the podium, please, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Andrew Dooley. I am Seagull Disposal, and I live here in Wycomico County. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the current rate increases at the landfill. We were given less than 30 days' notice, and that's simply not enough time. Many haulers, including my company, have already...
Can you do me a favor and pull the mic closer? Thank you.
Many haulers, including my company, have already invoiced customers for July. Some have even prepaid for the remainder of the year. We can't go back and bill retroactively, and we certainly can't afford to absorb the increase. Municipalities are in the same position. They need time to budget, communicate with residents, and if necessary, adjust fees or taxes. A July 1 increase announced just weeks in advance puts everyone in a difficult and unnecessary position. That's why any future rate changes should take effect in January, not July. A few weeks' notice simply doesn't give anyone the time they need to prepare. A January implementation gives haulers, municipalities, and residents the opportunity to plan responsibly. Other counties have always given us adequate notice when there are changes, and we're just asking Wycomico to do the same. I would also like to remind the county rates were just increased six months ago, from $67 to $78 per tonne, a 16% increase. Now, we're facing another increase to 84 in July, followed by 88 in January 2026. That's a 31% total increase in just one year. That level of escalation is hard to absorb and hard to explain to our customers and communities. If these increases go through, Wycomico County will have the highest landfill disposal rate of any area we serve, and that means the highest waste collection costs as well. For comparison, Somerset County charges $75 per tonne, Dorchester County's at $68.50 per tonne, although they did tell us they're planning to increase to 75. Worcester County's at $80 per tonne. Sussex County, the largest county we share a border with, is at $80 per tonne, and they have a rebate program for volume clients like haulers. Wycomico's proposed rate puts us well above our neighbors. These are pass-through costs that ultimately affect every resident, business, and municipality in the county. A county official recently justified this increase by mentioning that other counties charge for things like brush disposal, and that Wycomico does not. If that's a concern, then we should evaluate those services, brush, household permits, trash disposal, and any others on a case-by-case basis. Raising landfill rates for trash and CND disposal to cover unrelated gaps shifts the burden unfairly. A more targeted and transparent approach would lead to better outcomes for everyone. These challenges didn't develop overnight, and we shouldn't try to fix them all at once. If this is the result, as I'm told, of financial strain that's built up over the past 20 or 30 years, then let's work together on a reasonable, multi-year plan that brings stability, fairness, and input from the communities who will be affected. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Julie.
I'm Chris Prosha, Wycomico County. My concern, so I just recently moved here, a year and a half ago. Came from Texas, came here to help build the economy in the community. Some folks know me, some folks don't. With this price rise coming up, especially with no notice, as a customer of, we are one of the ones that have prepaid. So, we benefit on that one, just because with the communication we've had with the guys already, we're good to go there. Now, here's the other concern. So, I'm in, I'm county, all right? You know, it's one of those, not inside the city limit. One possibility that's gonna go on is you get these folks that do have land, they've got room, we can, figuratively speaking, cancel our trash service, and now we're gonna start burning stuff. Right? Gets rid of it. It saves us money, goes through there. Now, you're kicking out, you know, you've got the smoke, you've got all this extra stuff. So, in order for us to save money, because the prices of everything here are high, and that's just coming from Texas to Maryland, Texas. You know, it's one of those, but the price is high. Everyone's trying to save money, try to do the best we can to take care of ourselves, our families, and in certain circumstances, our businesses. Going with that, we're gonna save money by canceling services as, you know, a possibility, and now, everyone's gonna start burning their trash that are outside of city limit, going through there. You know, it's one of those burn barrels, all this extra stuff, keeping everything contained, having proper fire protection, because at the moment, I burn brush. I just happened to come across a, one of the fire marshals at Lowe's. Asked the question, because I just moved here, and he showed up at his truck. Asked the question, he goes, "Absolutely, as long as you're contained, and you've got a way to prevent the spread." So, here's one possibility, prices get jumped up that much more, that's an impact on all the families, you know, on all the different communities. So, now, instead of where the county is getting, okay, this extra money for stuff, where other counties aren't charging as much. So, okay, yeah, you're getting your extra money to an extent, until the county folk, you know, outside of city limits, realize, well, I can just save, you know, I've got those cost savings coming on me now, where I cancel my service. You know, you pay for your trash can to get picked up, because I figured that part out. But, now, we're gonna start burning all our refuse to save the money, but now, we're causing, you know, theoretically, you know, now, you're causing environmental factors outside of the normal waste disposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prosha. Any public comments?
My name is Judith Stribling. I'm a resident of Bi-Valve, and I'm also the chair of the Wycomico County Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee. We sent you a letter recently about this issue, and I would just like to follow up on that. I understand this is a drastic increase, but it is also a situation that has been developing over a large number of years, and is quite critical, and it poses an extreme environmental risk to the county and to the whole region if we don't address some of the problems that need to be addressed here. The overriding issue here is capacity. First of all, direct capacity to accept waste. So, the rate of expansion of our own Mount Trashmore is just alarming. I know that Mrs. Shields shares my concern about expansion of the landfill, because once the forest across from the landfill is converted to a cell, where's the next place we're gonna look? Back towards Route 50 to the residential neighborhoods there? That's been a problem in the past, and we're concerned about the rate of increase of expansion. We do not want to accept trash from outside Wycomico County, and it's my understanding that there are areas where the tipping fees are higher, and it is cheaper to dispose of land, of waste, to our landfill. We need to put ourselves on a level playing field. We are also facing a lack of capacity to fulfill our obligations to the public and the environment. This is related to support for staffing, equipment, monitoring, and infrastructure, and all of these are in need of increased funding. I, myself, have observed landfill operations and proposals for many years now, and I have to say, I think this current staff is committed to doing a good job, both with managing the day-to-day issues and with building plans to develop real solutions. For example, some of the things that we desperately need to do in this county beyond the day-to-day operations are addressing beneficial use of dredge spoil, both by employing it as landfill cap, and ultimately finding ways to help with erosion and loss of marshes; converting our gas recovery system to one that produces more valuable natural gas and eliminates even more odors in the process; reducing waste by converting food waste to energy; anaerobic digestion of poultry waste, I mean, how important is that to a county where poultry is so important; and educating the public on recycling and reducing the trash they generate. We all need to realize that our land is finite, and when we say, "Throw it away," there's no such place as a "way." It's our homeland. Our county has great people who just need support to take us to a new level of responsibility for the waste we generate, and I hope you will seriously consider adopting these fees as proposed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Stribling. Any other public comments? That concludes the public comments for Resolution 72-2025. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 72-2025?
So move.
Motion second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion.
John?
Yes, Shane.
I like, it was named Adam.
Yeah, I think we have Adam, we have Mr. Stavey here as well.
Yeah, to explain to...
Don't mind coming forward. I know you're just giving us a handout, is that correct?
That's correct.
Ms. Zoll, how are you?
Good.
Good evening.
Good evening. Pam Olin, Finance Director.
Adam Corey, Executive Director of Environmental Services, Acting Landfill Superintendent.
Good evening, all. Mike Swaby, Deputy Director of Public Works.
Have you all here? Thank you.
I'd just like you to explain to us, I mean, to the public.
Sure.
So, we won't look like we're the bad people, that the problems and concerns shared with us at last meeting.
So, I think on the 22nd, we had a very productive conversation, and frankly, the time before that as well, talking about this whole concept before I've even gotten here eight months ago, almost a year now. It was almost a year to the date that there was a resolution adopted on June 4, 2025, to go to $100, and then, of course, that was sticker shot. And we've talked about the idea of going with a progressive increase in rates until we get to a point that we consider to be a reasonable tipping fee, for various reasons. Now, we did put together somewhat of an agenda tonight for discussion. We're happy to go through that. If you would like to kind of keep it on that level, or we can do this holistically ad hoc. It's totally at the will of the council how you'd like to discuss it, but we do have some information to present to you in a little bit more cleaner form, if you'd like.
If I may, also, the budget is crafted at $100. The amendments being proposed will bring it down to the 84-88 number. That still gives a minor profit to this division, not a very significant profit, but it does generate a profit, which is where we should be, because we should be setting aside money to build the next cell. We should be setting aside money to close the cells that we have, and if we are crafting our budget at a loss, then we aren't doing those things. Additionally, we should not be borrowing money to do the next cell, and that's what we've had to do the last couple of years, and that's what our plan is again this year, is to borrow funds, because we're going to pay, over 20 years, about double the bond to do something that probably has a life of maybe, the next cell may be a little bit longer, but five to eight years, max. So, we're looking at borrowing funds, paying for it for 20 years, and because we haven't set aside the funds, and we haven't turned a profit in the last several years, if the rates change to something other than 84 and 88, my calculations show that we will generate a loss in 2026. So, and then I will go back to Adam.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Pam, as far as the dollars and cents thing of this. And I really, if it's okay with the...
The amendments being proposed will bring it down to the 84, 88 number. That still gives a minor profit to this division. Not a very significant profit, but it does generate a profit, which is where we should be because we should be setting aside money to build the next cell. We should be setting aside money to close the cells that we have. And if we are crafting our budget at a loss, then we aren't doing those things. Additionally, we should not be borrowing money to do the next cell. And that's what we've had to do the last couple of years. And that's what our plan is again this year, is to, is to borrow funds because we're going to pay over 20 years about double the bond to do something that probably has a life of maybe, the next cell maybe a little bit longer, but five to eight years, max. So we're looking at borrowing funds, paying for it for 20 years. And because we haven't set aside the funds and we haven't turned a profit in the last several years, if the rates change to something other than 84 and 88, my calculations show that we will generate a loss in 2026. So, and then I, I will go back to Adam.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Pam, as far as the dollars and cents thing of this. And, and I really, if it's okay with the council and Councilwoman Shields, if it's all right, we'd like to go through this packet, if you don't mind. All right?
Good evening all. Just briefly, what we're gonna cover here for the next few minutes is, you know, why is a fee review necessary? And why should we commit to a regular fee review? We're gonna talk about how we got where we are today. We'll talk about our level of service. And then the final thing we'll discuss is how a tax is different than a fee. So going to the first point, why should we review fees? And why have we recommended this fee increase? So first and foremost, following through on the handout you have, is to ensure landfill, the landfill enterprise remains solvent. Solvent meaning it's not going out of business and it doesn't have to be subsidized. Just to reinforce for, for new folks in the audience, because I know many of you have heard this before, it's a standalone business proposition as it is right now. Only the people that come to use it pay for it with a fee. The second reason we should evaluate on a regular basis is to dissuade demand for collectors of trash outside of Wycomico County to find other landfill destinations for their trash. We have suspicions that this is going on in, to a great extent. We've had huge increases in tonnage and flow. We even went so far as to investigate the state of Delaware's requirement to have hauler transporting permits. And several of our top contributors to landfill, commercial collectors, are licensed to haul in Delaware. That doesn't mean anything, except you've gotta have that permit if you take trash from Delaware, if you take trash to Delaware, or if you cross through it. So with landfill fees the way they are, at the nearest northern choice for landfills, we're trying to get right in line with what they are and make it not such an appealing feature. The third reason we should do this regular fee review and you should evaluate the fees we recommend is to protect the general fund from having to subsidize to ensure continued landfill operations. If we can get on par with what the fees need to be, we'll never have to lean on the general fund. But once we do that, there's no going backwards. And, and when that happens, every taxpayer is paying for the landfill. Right now, only users pay. So where we are today, Adam briefly mentioned it. We've had a series of revolutions, starting in June 4th of '24. And then several weeks later, again in June, we went to 100. And then we, we sort of adjusted and got in step to recognize that it was a shock for folks. So we went to $78 a ton. That's where we are right now. We took it upon ourselves and took what you've all told us very much to heart. And we took the feedback that we got to heart, including the feedback we've gotten this evening about not having any outreach. We had three different touches to public outreach. And I'll be emphatic about the word workshop, not a hearing. We didn't take a vote, we didn't have to have a quorum. We put a public invitation out on the internet, through people coming through the scales. We send invitations to the haulers. So on November 19th, 2024, at 6:00 PM at the Civic Center, we had our first public workshop. And it, it was not highly attended, but I have a sign-in sheet that shows, I think, about eight or 10 people. And at least one of the haulers, possibly two, were represented in that group. Then, on December 12th, 2024, we had a commercial haulers meeting. We called it a listening session. The point of it was to get them to come to the landfill and tell us how we could do better. But we took the opportunity to explain to them the challenges that we had. That was attended by Chesapeake Waste, Shore Waste, Seagull, CES, and the City of Salisbury. I have a sign-in sheet, I have meeting minutes, and we have an agenda. The third time we reached out, March 19th, 2025, from 6:30 to 8:30 at the Civic Center also. I have a sign-in sheet for that. At that time, we had reviewed, as one of the agenda items, the 10-year plan. And we told them, one of the things in that 10-year plan recognized that we had to evaluate fees on a regular basis. With that, I'll turn it over to Adam to discuss level of service.
So I appreciate that, Mike. And, and another thing that's gone in this discussion for a long period of time is the peer groups around us, and that's the landfills and other parts of the eastern shore. Frankly and simply put, we cannot be compared to any other landfill. And I'm just gonna give you some numbers here. Tonnage-wise, Wycomico County for the year 2024, 165,496 tons of material. Worcester, Worcester County had approximately 70,000 tons. Dorchester County, 56,682. Somerset County, a meager 27,463. Those three neighboring counties we touch here on the lower shore don't even touch what we took in in 2024 alone. The mid-shore regional landfill too, which is a four-county serviced area, took in 148,000 tons. And we're still beating that. As far as level of services to our community is concerned as well, that also adds to our cost and operational, you know, needs as far as staffing, resources, fleet, obviously, wear and tear on everything we own and operate. Out of the entire landfill operations I just named for the rest of the shore, excluding Sussex County and Delaware Solid Waste Authority, so I'm not including them in this form. But on the shore, Maryland, those all together operate 13 convenience centers and recycling stations. This county by itself operates 11 convenience centers and four 24-hour recycling centers. We cannot be compared to any other, other, other facility in our area. And hence the reason that if you're gonna take in that much more material and your operations are that much more intense, we have to be able to keep ourselves afloat with the appropriate fee. So the one last final point I wanted to wrap up with tonight, just to make sure the public is fully aware one more time, and Mike put it very plainly. We are a user-based financed program. You use the landfill, you pay for it. You don't use the landfill, you don't pay for it. We wanna keep it that way. We do empathize with the position of commercial haulers and customers of theirs that see, you know, an increase. You know, unfortunately, when you start getting, when you start working a problem even faster and harder and making it more excellent, because we have to have it that way to protect public health and the environment and make sure we have this resource available for years and years to come and decades to come, we gotta make sure we're putting money away in a piggy bank for the future. And we gotta do that by collecting the appropriate fee. So again, we're not raising taxes, this is a fee increase for users. If we fail to do this at this time, and I've heard the comments made, I think you're trying to make up for lost time. I can't take that out of the equation. We kept our tipping fees in this county too low for too long. And that damaged us in capacity and in a financial standpoint. If we don't take action now, the following things may take place. The enterprise may be compromised altogether. And again, we're talking about having to subsidize with the general fund, which we do not want to do. If we have to get to the point that we are looking at severe modifications to our operations, then we're putting even more of a hamstring on our customers. And when I say our customers, I, I mean everybody, including our commercial haulers. So while this is not an easy conversation to have, it's not been easy to present this and bring this concept up over this past year's time. It's something that we, we really have to consider if we want to stay where we are and go into the future with the appropriate operation.
Josh?
First of all, do you want to start, start off by saying, you know, you know, my favorite, my favorite football team, the Baltimore Ravens, I've been watching them every year since 1996. Usually at the start of the season, I like to get my toothbrush to be the same color as my, my favorite team. I started off, that's how I start my season. Can you tell me where my 1996 purple toothbrush is? If I put it in the trash in Mardella and went to the landfill, where is it at now?
So honestly, we could go back and look at where Mardella's trash from a convenience center came from, from a six-month period, if you can remember when you threw it away.
Yeah.
And probably tell you which cell it's in, I'd probably tell you close.
And the more, the important part of that is not only, of course, do you know where things at, which is awesome because you do great job managing, but the fact is, every single one of us who have used the toothbrush, whether that be 1996 or for the past 42 years that I've been brushing my teeth, all of those toothbrushes are sitting right in, they're not going anywhere.
No, they are not.
2,000 years from now, they'll still be sitting right in that big pile. So I just want to start it off, and it won't be on my soapbox for long on this, but I just want to be clear that we do have a huge in, issue with the amount of trash coming in here. And I said it last time, and I don't want to see Dorchester County trash in my, I don't want to see, I don't want to see Ocean City residents who come putting their trash in my county. I don't want to see Delaware residents putting their trash in my county. This is a, this is a finite resource that we have. And when it's gone, it's gone. No one's gonna try and put trash anywhere else in our county, right? So, you know, what you brought up at the last meeting, I think was important for the public to know. And we've been saying this quietly for a while, it needs to be said a little bit louder. We are in an absolute crisis mode. And I don't, I don't want to be hyperbolic in that or any of these. But when we say we literally come March, may not have anywhere to put our trash. I don't think we're gonna, we're gonna, we're probably not gonna stuff it into the Civic Center, right? You know, we don't have anywhere to put it until that next cell opens for potentially four or five months. That is, that is unbelievable. But we can't do anything about the past, we can't change the past. What we can do is try to look forward. We can't do anything about the fact that China no longer accepts our plastic and that most plastic is trash. We can't do anything, the fact that, you know, most things that used to be made in, in, in metal or in, you know, in glass are now all made in plastic. And that is filling up our landfill quite quickly. So I, I did want to underscore, I like what we heard as far as the comments, Ms. Stribblings and others have said, Dr. Stribling mentioned about anaerobic digestion. You know, 40% of what goes into our landfill is biodegradable. If we could get that out of there, that'll hopefully, then it won't, it won't, you know, it won't, it won't pile up as quickly. But at this point in time, we have an immediate crisis at hand. And I think we need to be thinking in terms, in, in those terms. So I guess in this, you know, I guess, Ms. Olin, I know, this is, there's budget concerns and budget issues here. We raised this a year ago, we tried to take time to, we raised this issue a year ago. We tried to be thoughtful about that with the community a year ago. And, and we tried to slowly raise it so it's not being too impactful on, you know, on the haulers that are coming in here. But I don't know, I guess that, that's the, the question for council. And I know we've had a lot of internal discussion about that, is, you know, what, what is a happy medium? But also, what is a happy medium when you're in an absolute crisis?
So for, I, the absolute crisis part exists. But on the financial side, I think we're also at an absolute crisis. For every ton that we currently take in at $78, we lose money. So it costs us more to run an operation with the size landfill that we have and the 11 convenience centers and the four recycling centers, they cost more than $78 per ton to operate. So to run our operation for another six months, three months, at $78 per ton just means we're compounding the losses that we are experiencing. We are supposed to be treating this like a business. It's hard to divide ourselves from being a government where we're providing a service to run something like a business. And I understand the haulers are also a business. But should we, as a business, that is supposed to make a profit to be able to reinvest, subsidize another business? Because if we don't make changes to our rates, we are subsidizing other businesses. And I understand their concerns. I get my trash picked up. I do. I get my trash picked up and I get it taken to a landfill. So I understand that if these rates go up, there's a good probability that the bill that my husband gets is gonna go up. And he's going to debate whether or not he continues to get a, just get a dump sticker and take it. And then I'll argue, yeah, but you don't take it. But that's a whole nother story. But, but honestly, it's the, and we're not raising the dump sticker. We are not. We are only raising on the commercial haulers because that is where our volume comes in. We are not proposing for the individual dump stickers to change. But should we continue, knowing that we're operating at a loss, to operate at a loss for any more length of time?
Yeah. Why don't, why do you not charge for brush?
So we do charge commercial operations for brush, $33.50 a ton. But Wycomico County residents bringing it from their residential property is free.
Okay, why?
It's just the way it's always been. We have certainly taken a look at the fact that our brush pile is a losing proposition as well.
I mean, I noticed Parsonsburg, how large it is.
Yeah.
When you get out there, you know, it's, you take weeks with grinder that costs millions of dollars probably to run. I was, I've often wondered why you, why.
Right, well, we.
Was, why you did that. I know you sell supposedly, used to, do you sell?
Yeah, we still sell second-run mulch. But we utilize mulch on the hill as well for trash.
Did you study how much, if you started charging for that, did you study how much money that would bring in?
So we don't have a good knowledge as far as full tonnage, okay, coming into the landfill for any time series data, because we've never charged for it, for residences. And we've charged commercial accounts. We can make assumptions on how much is coming in for residents to be able to come, everybody going across the scales for their brush.
Commercial's not allowed at the convenience center, right?
Well, here's the thing. Commercials are supposed to come, commercial landscapers, commercial tree service, whatever, are supposed to come across our scales at Brick Hill Road, be weighed, dump their brush, go back out the other way on the scales and pay. Our scales are open until 4 o'clock. Our brush piles open until 6 o'clock. You know how many landscaping trucks come into our brush pile at 4:05? They do that in Parsonsburg, they do it in Bi-Valve. It's a losing proposition.
So that means you're not keeping up with what's going on.
Well, no, we are keeping up with what's going on. It's very hard when somebody tells you, nope, this is from my mother's house.
Wow.
All right. But I digress on that point. Do you want the citizens of the county, that's the regular homeowner, Johnny homeowner, that's gonna come bring a half a pickup truck load of leaves from his house after a storm to be going across the scales at $33.50 a ton? If we want to do that, we certainly can. However, that's not gonna, that's not gonna take care of the financial issue we're in, nor will it take care of the issue with our capacity and our landfill as far as trash is concerned.
I noticed at Parsonsburg that there is, I would call them, commercial haulers. They might not have a sticker on their truck, but they're in there on a daily.
Understood.
Not a daily basis, but often. You know, how much money did you save when you closed the recycling centers?
Can't tell, well, first and foremost, there was two recycling centers that were closed. That was the, the one at the extension office and the one at the Civic Center. I don't, the money saved, and of course, this happened before I came here, but money saved from that would have been in transport. Okay?
Correct.
So, I mean, I can run numbers for you on that.
Wear and tear on the dumpsters.
Sir?
Wear and tear on the dumpsters.
Wear and tear on the dumpsters, yeah, they, yeah. But recycling dumpsters don't get as much wear and tear as their 40-yard trash bins do at convenience centers. We can certainly look into that as well. At the end of the day, I don't think that proposition either, unless you are talking about reducing significantly the services we provide out in the community. Because we started looking at dollars and cents savings from closing convenience centers and closing recycling centers.
I'm not talking about closing convenience centers, I never mentioned that.
I understand, but you're asking me to talk about what kind of money I saved by closing a facility somewhere?
I figured you would have known how much you, you would have saved by closing, because recycling center was a very hot topic when it happened, when you closed them without notice.
Again, we've, we've discussed this, yeah. And I don't, I don't think it's germane to this particular part of the conversation as it, as it pertains to tipping fees. Oh, I know it does, I know you want it to.
I'm asking questions.
Go ahead.
So I ask, how much did you?
I don't know how much we saved from a, from a recycling center being closed.
The other piece of that is that we would have to try to quantify the time that has been saved by the Civic Center staff not cleaning up the parking lot. Because we got complaints at the Civic Center that the parking lot looked like trash. Well, yeah, because people didn't put things in the recycling bins, they brought trash that shouldn't be there. And so solid waste employees did do a fabulous job of trying to keep up with that. But our, our staff who was out there every day also had to. So that is not a quantifiable number. That number has been a savings though, because we have not had to
divert.
divert staff from the Civic Center interior to clean up the exterior.
That would have been the Civic Center cost, that wouldn't be anything to.
Well, not having to send out solid waste division staff on time and time again to clean up trash at a recycling center that was being abused.
But your Civic Center staff should not have to be. But your civic center staff should not have to be cleaning up solid waste trash.
Well, I understand that, they should not have to be. The gentleman at the podium said that there was no warning again, and we went through this last year. You did have hearings, I understood, you said.
Workshops.
Did you tell them that you planned on raising these rates to $88?
We told them they were, go ahead.
We absolutely did. We have the sign-in sheets, the agenda, the material that was discussed.
I see them standing up there in the back shaking their heads, no.
We were never told a specific rate. We were never told if we could not raise our prices based on, hey, we need higher rates at some point.
All right, thank you.
The other piece that, in the budget message, so last year, there was no discussion in the budget message about rates. In the budget message this year, it was very clearly stated, which was submitted on the 3rd Tuesday in April, that it was going to $100 a ton. So, that was a public document that was submitted to council with a budget message blatantly stated in a paragraph that, so it has been told at least two, two months, a month and a half ago.
Jeff here. So, I'm sure somebody in the audience is saying, why am I asking all these questions? When this happened a year ago, and the rates were raised, and I made the comment at this table about why weren't people notified, county executive stood at the podium and blamed me. She says, well, these people are in your district, you should have told them. Well, the county executive is one that should have been having hearings and meetings and told people about this.
The county executive told people about it in her budget message. It is blatantly stated in the budget message that went out on the 3rd Tuesday of April. So.
First off, thank you all for putting this presentation together. It would have been nice to have this conversation about six months ago. So, listening to the podium's messages, it's, it sounds like there's a concern that trash is coming in from outside the county, but we have no proof. We, we don't know if that's happening, and if so, at what rate it's happening. Looking at the rates that these surrounding counties are charging, Worcester County's $2 a ton more than us, I, I can't imagine from a business perspective, somebody driving through a county to save $2 a ton, that's, that's the same as driving up to Delmar to save 2 cents a gallon on, on gasoline. It, that just doesn't make good business sense. Does it happen? It might. I think I suggested at a previous meeting that maybe a meeting with the haulers and just having a down and dirty conversation, folks, we need to reduce the input at the landfill, can you divert X number of percent of your trucks to another landfill? Full stop. No one's denying that this issue exists. It took years for this, this issue to manifest itself, it's probably going to take a few years to fix. It appears that we're trying to fix it all within one year at the expense of the haulers. It's already tough enough to run a business, I swim in that pool every day, trust me. I, I just can't justify an increase of this magnitude in such a short period of time. I'd fully support sitting down and coming up with a three to five-year plan on regularly scheduled rate increases so that these haulers can create their contracts at a reasonable price point where they can stay in business. So, that's, that's one question. Do you still write dump stickers for people that live in Delaware?
For a long time, there was apparently a policy here, unwritten policy, that if you lived within three miles of the county line or something like that, that you could get a dump sticker. I stopped that as soon as I walked in the door. If you have one, you can keep it until it's expired.
So, you don't do that anymore?
You can keep it until it's expired. Once it's expired, we're not going to renew that permit.
Have you sent those people?
They've been given notice the day they come in. Yeah, we don't know about it until they come in.
You give them notice when they come in that day.
So, okay, here, here's the thing, there's a lot of things.
You know where it ends up then? It ends up along the road.
Yeah, sure, I know that. So, here's the thing, there's been so many things I've had to tackle at that landfill since I walked in that door, like I'm thinking about it in my sleep, because it was left undone for too long.
Okay.
To try and get ahold of somebody that I don't even know their registration sticker says, they live in, they live on St. Luke's Road, for example, but I don't know that they are outside of white Comico County until they come to renew that sticker. So, we give them notice and we do the best we can.
All right, just a question. Yeah, as, and we, go ahead. I think we sent an email over earlier this week, how many dump stickers do we have in this county?
Sold 9,012 last year, and we had 10,000 tons of, of trash from those stickers. The drop in the bucket.
9,000 stickers.
9,000 stickers, 10,000 tons. We had 165,000 total tons.
Wow.
Very limited amount of trash comes in from those stickers.
I would say in regard to raising fees, sort of as, as a deterrent, and we're rehashing a lot of what we've done before, but as far as raising fees as a deterrent, to me, it just appears as if we're penalizing, you know, our local contractors, our local municipalities and townships, you know, in some type of an effort to create a deterrent to contractors who are possibly serving communities who are outside of the county. And that's a concern of mine, I'd like to see if there's a better solution that we might find, a more creative solution we might find. As far as the funding is concerned, I mean, this is a council that we've been funding the airport, which was also an enterprise account, as you, as you mentioned, Mr. Sabi, and I appreciate that, we've been funding the airport, tuned to millions of dollars as, as, as an enterprise account, so much so that we're sort of transferring them in, to a department under the county, which I think is good. We also recently funded, as you all are aware, $7.2 million to, just to transfer dredging spoils from one location to another. That's 7.2. That problem alone would solve all of our problems at the landfill, so, to a certain degree. You can correct me in a minute.
Okay.
So, I, you know, but that's part of what we did, and I also think that, you know, having to assist public works with more funding for another cell or to try to accelerate your processes, no matter how you might choose to accelerate them, I think that we can handle that at this time, and I think the county, the council has an appetite to, to look at doing that, if that would also help to resolve that problem. But I think we need to go back full circle first to find out if there isn't a more reasonable means by which to create a deterrent, if you think it's necessary, to slow the process of those contractors who are not actually serving only white Comico County. Mr. Sabi?
That particular element of, of what we think is actually happening, that is not by any means the primary reason. It will at the same time accomplish that to some degree. And, you know, the other thing, in response to something that's been mentioned multiple times about the contrast, contractors being hurt, the hauling contractors, I'm just wondering, in all the years that the landfill never increased its, its tipping fees, how many times did the haulers increase their rates anyway? Did they hold fast?
I, I don't want to get into hypotheticals or anything like that, I can only look at what other counties are charging and where we are.
Understood, understood. And, but the reality is, I mean, I, I think I presented this a little over a year ago, there was a graph in a presentation that showed every touch point each year as to where the, the rates were, and we went a period of 25 years and the rate went up 1.7%. So, case, case resting.
I guess.
It's, it's a hole we're trying to dig our way out of.
And again, $84, which is what's being proposed in July, is a barely break-even number. $88 is a number that actually makes money. Again, this is supposed to make money so that we set aside money instead of borrow money to build the next cell. And we're looking, you've seen the CIP, we're looking at millions of dollars that we, and the more we borrow, the harder it's going to be to continue to service this landfill.
Our reserves are how much currently?
We have, I did not bring that number, it's, the reserve for this solid waste is not nearly as healthy as the reserve at the general fund. And again.
The reserves in the general fund?
I, I.
Round number within 10 million. That's how we operate.
Yeah, but again, we shouldn't be, that shouldn't be our default. Our solid, our solid waste division should, like tourism, should stand on its own.
So, should the airport, we understand it.
No, airport and the civic center are not going to stand on their own, they never should have stood on their own.
All right, well, I'm just going by what we, the government.
A solid waste, a solid waste facility is supposed to make a profit so that it can maintain its operations and expand as necessary.
Jeff?
And post-closure.
Yes.
What is that break-even number?
When I ran it a year ago, it was $84. I have not run it on, I have not run it on 2025's results, but on 2024's results, it was $84. So, we lost money for every ton we took in all of 2025.
First of all, I know you don't have your graphing calculator in front of you or your financial calculator. You know, we've been, we've been having a lot of consternation, a lot of conversations on this, you know, overall this topic, and I know, I think we've all agreed, I think we said it a year ago, I think we've all agreed, right, pardon me if I'm wrong, that we are going to come up with a schedule, so we say, from this year to this year, this is the amount that you're going to pay from three years out, so that we can give, make sure that the haulers know exactly what they're going to pay at that point in time, and that makes it a lot easier for them, and we all know that. So, I think, we, I think we're all in agreement, that's where we're going to go, and that's something the council can look at and approve every year or every other year, three-year schedule. But we're obviously in a bit of a pickle here in this current situation. The question of whether or not, you know, if we held off to say January 1st and then raised it and then just stayed at $90 level, just stayed where we're currently at and then jumped to 90 on January 1st, I'm trying to, we've been all been trying to think through this, are there ways in which we can make sure that the haulers don't have to throw a, a bunch of cost onto their, onto their folks that they didn't expect to have to do so, or that they don't lose money? And I know this is already challenging enough, but are you doing graphs already? That's pretty, that is impressive.
I'm, so.
No, I, I don't know if there's anything like that you could give us guidance as far as, with something, with something like that.
So, I can tell you if, the number that I have with me is $78, I have $78 to 84 to 88. I have that. That is a profit of, give me one second to get to the right number. That is a profit, it's on this sheet, sorry, have to find the right sheet.
Say it was about 100 and some thousand dollars per dollar.
So, yeah, so we will, at 84 and 88, make about $300,000. If we do stay at 78 and, and only go to 88 in January, we will lose $153,000. So, by not giving us that interim step, it swings our revenue by $450,000. So, we go from a $300,000 profit approximately to $153,000 loss by not doing the interim step, because that $6 creates $450,000 a profit.
So, theoretically, if we did just go straight, if we kept things the same and went to, say, $100 in January, and, and left it at that for hopefully a long time or whatever is appropriate, would that still, budget-wise, do you have?
You'd have to give me a couple of minutes to do some algebra, because I did not, the, the two numbers, the two numbers that I, I came with was 84, 88 in comparison to what we had budgeted at 88 and 100 is what we budgeted at, was to go to 88 in July and 100 in January. So, I.
At the request of the council, we came back.
Yes, and we.
After the previous session, not on the 22nd, the 2nd or 8th or whatever it was, to go to 84 to 88 is a consideration. And I believe that day, there was consensus, from what I remember.
So, 84 and 88 is, but I did calculate based on an email I received from Mrs. Hurley asking what it would be if we just went straight to 88 in January and skipped the interim step. That is the number. If you want another number than that, I need five minutes of quiet, or less.
I have one statement.
So.
Um, you mentioned that, at the time we talked before this meeting, that the Maryland Department of Environment has given you all certain regulations. Does that bring the cost of running the landfill?
Always going to bring it up. And, and look, we're under strict regulation already from state, local, you know, federal. The state is increasing certain regulations, especially considering air quality, rogue emissions of methane, for example, our, our surface air emission quality has to be increased significantly. Hence, the reason we've been talking to you folks about WAGA energy in our due diligence period to upgrade our well network. Upgrading our well network takes money. Pam just talked about a $300,000 profit. I just sent a letter of intent for a $1.65 million compactor, because I've, I've talked to you all about it before, it's, it's getting ready to die. Like you say, these, the diversion thing, I, I appreciate the conversation on that, and it is part of the equation, but it is, it is the lowest part of the equation. The equation is, based on the intensity of our operation, the size of our landfill, the majority of material we bring in and tonnage-wise, and how many areas we serve across the county, we are not set at an appropriate rate. We are losing money, it's just that simple.
Jeff? Am I correct in, you have a meeting with the haulers on next week?
That's correct.
That would be a great time to have a serious conversation about this.
I think this is a serious conversation now.
Yeah.
I think we had a serious conversation on the 22nd, I think we had a serious conversation before that and throughout last year.
I'd like to make a motion that we skip the interim step and go straight to $88 on January 1st, have a meeting or two or three in the next six months with these haulers, and let's get creative and figure out how we can manage this landfill, reduce the input, and all work together so these haulers don't have to raise their rates again to their customers within such a short period of time. If they raise it, if they raise the rates January 1st or after that, I'm sure everybody can live with that, but that's a pretty significant increase in such a short period of time. We all acknowledge that the problem exists. We just, I don't think we can fix it in such a short period of time.
The resolution, the resolution on the tables to amend, excuse me, the amendment on the tables are, amend resolution 72-2025 to $88 a ton effective January 1st with no escalation in July. Is there a second?
A second, Pam.
Our motion's second. Any further discussion?
If I may, real quickly, you mentioned $90. If I did my math really quickly, it basically breaks us even for the year. We don't lose $150,000. It's going to be plus or minus a little bit, I need to actually like figure that out for the budget amendment if counts, but $88 does create the $150,000 loss.
$90.
$90 should be right around break-even.
Just for discussion, I, I, we are in an awful situation, I think everyone realizes that, and I'm glad it's much more public about how tough this is, but I think for that reasoning, you know, I think, I think we may need to consider the, I, I think I probably would rather see the $90, just wait to hold off until January, go at $90. I don't know that the step, I know we were trying to be thoughtful with the step situation, I don't know that, you know, to, to Mr. Merritt's point, I should have been at Merritt's point, that, you know, I don't, we're, we are in a rough spot and we don't want the folks to, to suffer, but at the same time, we gotta, we have to do what's right for the landfill because we don't have any more space. We've already, I was there when we talked about throwing this in Mar del Rey and putting it in San Domingo and have a new cell out there, you know, no one wants it in their area, no one wants it in their, we only have one cell, and when this thing's gone, it's gone.
So, if, if, if I can, I, I don't love your amendment, but if you're willing to amend your amendment to $90, I can then have, when we do the budget, the exact amount, but it's going to be plus or minus a little bit at $90 versus 88 actually generating a loss.
Can't believe you can't figure that out on the fly with a pen and a paper.
I was close, I'm close, not just.
Any further discussion on the amendment?
I agree with Josh and I agree with Jeff, so I'd, I'd go either way on this. Okay, Josh, if Jeff wants to withdraw his amendment and put Josh's in, that's fine, but I guess the other side of this is, we need to find out how we can. the other side of this is we need to find out how we can, I think you really need to look at your brush situation to try to get something going there. The other, the other thing is, is, you know, we're going to be facing the same dilemma in January. So I guess we'll, I guess we'll face that, cross that bridge when we-
We'll have a little more notice. And I think the county absorbing a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a lot easier than asking the contractors to absorb a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Well, if we go to ninety dollars a ton, we won't absorb anything.
I understand. But with the motion on the floor for eighty-eight, my, my discussion is I think the county can absorb a hundred and fifty thousand dollars much more easily than asking the contractors and the municipalities and the cities and, excuse me, the townships to absorb it. Where are the, where are the county, you know?
Yep.
Any other discussions?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I think the motion and looking at the resolution should be to strike eighty-four dollars per ton as of July 1st, 2025, and then just state whatever dollar amount you guys decide, whether that's ninety or eighty-eight.
January?
On January 1st, 2026.
Is that acceptable?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And you're doing-
Do you need it actually stated? I, I, I thought we clearly stated that there would be no increase in July. There would only be an increase in January of eighty-eight to eighty-eight dollars. We didn't make that statement. Go ahead, Jeff, you want to?
No, that, that's correct. No, no interim step.
I, I was just trying to make the point of clarifying. You should say that you're striking the language in the resolution for that.
Okay. You make that statement?
Yes, we'll strike the language.
Correct, okay.
Thank you.
And, and you're leaving it at eighty-eight.
Are we okay with the second?
At eighty-eight.
Are we okay with the second, Joe?
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Hurley. We have to do what she wants to do because she, she makes it happen. Any other discussion?
Jeff, are you going to make a motion to make it ninety dollars in January or?
I think we leave it at eighty-eight and then look at it again in January after we have, we, at this point, we have six months to have serious discussions with all the haulers and form a plan. So if we do this tonight, that buys time to have discussions to actually solve this problem instead of trying to chase it. Because we're chasing it now, we're going to be chasing it in January and on and on and on. So it's nice to hear that you guys have a meeting next week. That's a great start.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
We'll do it by, Joe.
Pardon me?
We're going to do it by roll call. Joe?
Yes.
Josh?
Fifty-fifty, I'll go no.
James?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Shaney?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. The amendment to Resolution 72 dash 2025 passes by a vote of five to one. Any further discussion on Resolution 72, 2025 as amended? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 72, 2025 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution 72, 2025 as amended passes unanimously. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Thank you very much.
But we didn't make it.
All right. Next for your consideration is Resolution Number 73 dash 2025. This is to adopt the capital improvement program for fiscal year 26 through fiscal year 30. Council has had several work sessions on the proposed CIP over the past few months. During those discussions, it was pointed out that the county executive has submitted a capital budget for fiscal year 26 that does not match what was proposed in the fiscal year 26 CIP. Charter Section 74G title Items in Budget states that the portion of the cost of the capital program that must be paid for in the next fiscal year shall be the capital budget. And said capital budget shall be included in the expense budget for the next fiscal year. This means there are several projects in the fiscal year 26 column of the CIP that needs to be amended to match what was in the proposed capital budget, as well as the projects were, that were discussed during the budget negotiations. A list of those proposed changes is on the council table for your consideration.
Entertained motion from council to approve Resolution 73 dash 2025. So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Joe, comments?
I suggest, I, I don't know how Mrs. Hurley wants it done, but the three budget, the three amendments, the three motions need to be made to amend the CIP. There, council has been provided, I believe, what I stated.
We have a complete entire list. It will take fifteen minutes, but we are going to have one council person who wants to volunteer to read this as an amendment.
Okay.
And this, thank you. We appreciate the list.
Yes.
So we have a motion to approve the resolution. As we all know, there are changes that we have worked through over the last month or so. Who would like to take it on to make the amendment to Resolution 73, 2025 as presented by Ms. Olin? Who wants to do that?
Me.
You've just been voluntold.
Make a motion to amend the capital improvement program for fiscal year twenty, this is the right one, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Resolution 73, 2025.
Yeah.
Yes, that's the right thing.
Yep. Just want to make sure I'm reading the right stuff. Motion to amend the capital improvement program for fiscal years 2026 to 2030 to revise the fiscal year 2026 column so that it aligns with the fiscal year 26, the 2026 capital budget as submitted by the county executive in, in, in her proposed budget and as modified through subsequent budget negotiations with the county council as follows. To remove one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars emergency services radio dispatch consulates from Pago, the final amount, zero. Add emergency services Pittsfield Tower rebuild to Pago, one million fifty thousand. Underneath that, it's the building located at the Pittsfield Tower location is beyond its useful life. It houses all of the equipment for the county and the city located on the tower. We'll have discussions with the state regarding their building at the location and determine if we combine our equipment. This rebuild will also purchase new equipment. The equipment will become unsupported in two years and replacing at this time will allow for the tower to be down for the shortest amount of time. Next item, remove Board of Education Fruitland Primary 8.3 million dollar bond to zero. To increase Board of Ed Fruitland Primary state share to twelve million thirty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars. Remove Board of Ed Primary, uh-
Fruitland Primary?
Yep, sorry.
It's okay.
Remove Board of Ed Fruitland Primary 27.3 million forward funding to zero. And then increase Public Works Engineering Sharps Point Wetland Mitigation Pago to seven million five hundred thousand. To add Rhodes Fuel Tank System to eight hundred and seven thousand five hundred dollars. The fuel tank and fueling system needs to be updated in the roads, at the road facility. This will be paid for, paid for by using four hundred thousand Pago, four hundred thousand enterprise fund, and seven, seven thousand five hundred from Parks. Move, the next item is to move Civic Center Elevator Funding Source from Pago to Bond. That is one million one hundred thousand. The remove, next item, remove ninety-five thousand Civic Center Midway Corridor Modernization from Restoration to zero. Next, move Rec. and Parks Mason Dixon Funding Source from Pago to Bond. That is one million five hundred thousand. Next is to reduce Rec. and Parks Mason Dixon State Grant to two hundred thousand. Next is add Airport Snow Removal Equipment from Fiscal Year 27 to Fiscal Year 26. That is one million three hundred thousand. That is split funds now thirty-two point five thousand Pago, thirty-two point five thousand state grant, and one million two hundred and thirty-five thousand in federal grant funding. Add, add, next is add Airport Hangar for Mechanic School Funding Source to be a state grant. That is one million five hundred thousand. Remove 1.35 million solid waste pots property mining from Enterprise Fund. That's zero. Remove 2.75 million Health Department Verizon Building renovation from Bond to zero. Move Emergency Services Pittsfield Tower Rebuild Funding Source from Pago to Bond, one million fifty thousand. Move Library Flagship, Flagship Library at Shoemaker Park Funding Source from Pago to Bond, eight hundred and sixty-six thousand. Move Civic Center Marquee Funding Source from Other Civic Center Restoration to Pago, one hundred and fifty thousand. And that's, that's it.
There's a motion. There's a second. Please. Shaney, would you like to read the second? We have a motion second on the floor. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Amendment passes. Any further discussion on Resolution 73, 2025 as amended? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 73, 2025 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 73, 2025 as amended passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. The next item for business, Resolution Number 59 dash 2025. This is to authorize the county executive to execute a lease agreement with Azure Flight Support SBY LLC for a fixed base operation. A public hearing was held on May 20th on this resolution, and we have Mr. Tony Rudy here, Director of Aviation, if you have any questions.
Entertained motion from council to approve Resolution 59, 2025. So moved. Second?
Second.
Discussion? Good evening, Mr. Rudy. How are you? Could you state just for the record so we have it on the, uh?
Yes. Tony Rudy, Airport Director.
Thank you very much. Any questions from anyone? I think we've been through this quite a bit. All those in favor, since there is no discussion, right? We're done?
General aviation situation has been resolved.
We, we've come up with a plan to move forward.
I think there's still some hiccups there. I'm hoping that we'll work through that. I think it's-
Some items we're currently working on. I have to get with legal department and there's some work at the airport itself that we-
I understand. I, I don't want to let that pass though. I think we need to continue with that rigorously.
I appreciate you doing that.
So anyway, continuing on as far as the, the Azure agreement, all those in favor of Resolution 59, 2025, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 59, 2025 passes unanimously. Thank you.
Next is a submission of Benjamin Jordan as Assistant Director of Administration by Bunky Luthman, Director of Administration.
Good evening, Council President. So I'm here to submit, and this is a little unusual, I admit, two different names for Assistant Director of Administration. And so just sort of ahead of time before I submit, we recognize that this is an unusual step. But previously, and I believe it was from Councilwoman Shields, we had previously been told that, you know, the council might be favorable if in these appointments, we brought multiple names so that you could interview multiple candidates. So that's what we've, we've done here. And I know the county executive previously also sent, I believe it was 10 or 11 resumes of shore of showing you the different folks who, who had applied. But for the first submission, this is Delmar, Maryland Mayor Ben Jordan has applied for Assistant Director of Administration. Obviously has a lot of local government experience. So we believe he would be good in the role. So I'd like to formally submit Mayor Ben Jordan. And then secondly, Mr. Steve Laken. He has a lot of state government experience, a career spanning several decades in, in government. And we also believe that he would potentially make a really good Assistant Director of Administration. What you have here are two candidates that are totally contrasting in resume. But this is one of those positions where both of these candidates could be good candidates for the position. So that's why, you know, we submitted both names. So I want to also formally submit Stephen Laken as a candidate or nominee for Assistant Director of Administration.
Yeah, I can't say for sure, Bunky. I thought that we had said that, you know, it's fine for you to submit the executive's choice. I think our interest was we just would like to have seen all of the applicants that were, that were turned in, just, you know, as an overview. But I, I don't think that the council meant to say that we want four applications at our table so that we could make that decision. But I appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right. Well, we thank you for the submissions and we will be addressing that further on agenda.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is Resolution Number 75 dash 2025 declaring Court Smart Digital Systems, Inc. as a sole source vendor for the Circuit Court of Wacomico County. As a reminder, the SM filing the resolution number indicates that this requires a supermajority vote, meaning that five council members must vote in favor of the resolution in order for it to pass.
Entertained a motion-
Go ahead.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 75 dash 2025. Second?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Leahy, good to see you. Thanks for being here. Anybody have any questions from Ms. Leahy? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 75 dash 2025 will say aye or nay. We'll do a roll call starting with Joe Holloway?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Shaney?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Resolution 75 dash 2025 passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Benson. How are you?
Good evening, Council. We're here for Bill Number 2025 dash zero six. It is the Annual Budget and Appropriation Bill of Wacomico County, Maryland to adopt the county budget consisting of the operating and capital budget for the fiscal year ending June 30 of 2026, the governmental and enterprise funds budget for the fiscal year ending June 30 of 2026, the anticipated grant funding budget for the fiscal year ending June 30 of 2026, the FY 26 budget changes budget for the fiscal year ending June 30 of 2026, the FY 26 salary tables, the FY 26 proposed capital budget for the fiscal year ending June 30 of 2026, and to appropriate funds for all expenditures for the fiscal year being July 1st, 2025 and ending June 30 of 2026 as hereafter indicated. It's here tonight for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Entertained a motion from council to adopt Legislative Bill Number 2025 oh six. So moved. Second?
Aye.
And then discussion, once again, Mrs. Hurley, or someone has been nice enough to present us with a proposed amendment list?
These are, these are, Pamela Lynn, Finance Director, these are all the amendments that were discussed at the last meeting. There are, I do have two minor changes. I, I don't know if the anticipated grant one got updated since I sent it with the adding the nine in it.
Yes, that's updated.
Okay. Okay. So that one's updated. So the very last motion has to be updated based on the changes for the eighty-four dollars. So the motion would now need to be reduce revenue by one million six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the reduction of the rates from a hundred dollars per ton to eighty-eight dollars per ton in January. Then reduce contribution to fund balance by one million three hundred and seventy-three thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars is what that would have to change to.
Sorry, could you repeat that again?
Yes, one million three seven three.
This is the last section?
Yeah, but I have to add a third one because of flip flopping from a revenue, from a gain to a loss. One million three seven three five two three. And then there now needs to be a third bullet point under this motion that says increase revenue by one hundred fifty-three thousand sixty-six dollars for use of fund balance.
One hundred fifty-three thousand sixty-six dollars?
One five three zero six six for use of fund balance. Otherwise, the motions are as presented and should be the changes that council had a consensus on at the last meeting.
I always get my pluses and minuses mixed up in the accounting world. On the last request that you made, is that going to be something as an amendment or will that be a recommendation?
Well, that you-
Since the council can't add.
To balance, I need to balance the budget.
Right. But we normally just, even in, we just do it as a, even when we pass it, we do it as a recommendation.
You can't pass an unbalanced budget. So I, I mean-
We've never, we've never voted to increase the budget ever. It's always been a recommendation.
Overall, we're decreasing the budget. It's just I have to increase a line on the revenue side to make the budget balanced. Because before, the balancing agent was down in expenses is how accounting works in- in, um, budgetary accounting requires you to put a number in that either is an expense when you're making a profit, or a revenue when you're making a loss. So this is the balancing agent. We're chain, we're eliminating the expense balancing item and putting the revenue balancing item in, but overall, council is decreasing the budget.
Mrs. Hurley?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll just say that, um, council has the authority to change the amount of the tipping fee because it's actually dictated in the county code, but per the charter, you don't have authority to touch revenues unless you're correcting a mathematical error.
This would be a mathematical thing.
Yeah.
We're correcting a mathematical error.
Well, it's a...
I can live with that.
Yeah, it's a mathematical error based on the fact that we no longer have that revenue coming in.
All right, so the, this section of that, the verbiage specifically for that will be making a motion to correct a mathematical error.
I would just say increase revenue, but that's Pam, that's Pam Olin.
Error by increasing the revenue, which, when you say the revenue, the revenue for which?
Uh, the, for use of fund balance. That's a line, that's a specific line item in revenue.
By increasing the revenue for use of hun, fund balance?
Yes.
Gotta make sure we get it right.
That is an actual specific line in our budget. You either have a contribution to fund balance or a use of fund balance to balance your budget. We're balancing our budget by using fund balance because revenue is not sufficient to cover all the expenses.
Sounds good. Okay, thank you, Pam, very much.
Yep.
Yes, Josh?
We'll start into the...
Yeah, Joe, now Josh, you're gonna have to read the one that she just said.
Yeah. Yeah, I got it.
Yeah, all right, thanks.
Go ahead. Um, okay, uh, so of course I acknowledge this is, uh, not, uh, these are amendments not chosen by individual council members. These are just divvied up as what, uh, consensus has been reached. I get the luck of the draw on salary and benefit adjustments, so I make a motion to amend salary and benefits as follows. Increase salary funding from Department oh-four, State's Attorney's Office, by a hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Increase all Red Line employees to receive the full three percent COLA for the first full period, pay period in July, and to receive the full two percent step in the first full pay period in January, as well as adjust FICA due to the salary changes. This will have impact on general fund, solid waste fund, and wreck and parks fund. This will adjust the position control document and appropriation for the wreck and parks. Adjust salary, as third item, adjust salaries for position numbers, uh, one, zero, zero, five, one, zero, zoning tech, one, zero, zero, one, thirty-three, building inspector, and one, zero, zero, one, twenty-nine, GIS specialists within all, within Department thirteen, planning and zoning for the amounts necessary to reflect offers in overall increases, and to adjust FICA for those, for these changes. This will also adjust the position control document. Uh, item four, um, cap salary increases at nine percent, that is four and a half percent in the first full pay period in July, and then four and a half percent in the first full pay period in January. For Finance Director, Deputy Director of Finance, Head of Human Resources, IT Director, Deputy Director of IT, Director of Emergency Services, and Deputy Director of Emergency Services. Also adjust FICA in the control, position control document for these changes. And lastly, within this section, uh, in this motion, remove position number one, zero, one, zero, two, seven, Chief EMS Division, in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars on Exhibit E. In this, in addition, this will reduce expenses for the Department twenty-two, Emergency Services, in both salaries and benefits. That's my motion.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Amendment passes. Joe?
Okay, on the expenses, um, I make a motion to amend expenses as follows. Increase general fund, Department eighteen Salisbury Fire Ambulance, operating expenses by one million, five hundred thousand dollars to pay remainder of back payment. Reduce general fund PNI on capital investments, Department forty-three debt retirement by two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Reduce solid waste fund fifty-one PNI on capital investments by a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Increase recreation and parks fund sixty PNI on capital investment by sixty thousand dollars. This adjustment will also increase transfer from the general fund within Fund sixty and the appropriation in the general fund, Department sixty, wreck and parks, operating expenses. Increase Wacomico Youth and Civic Center Fund sixty-one PNI on capital investments by forty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. This will also increase transfer from the general fund within Fund sixty-one and the appropriation in general fund, Department forty-six, contingency transfer reserves, operating expenses. I have added two more items here that I would like to read.
We're gonna, those...
Oh, I'm sorry. Increase recreation and parks fund sixty, capital expenses by twenty-one, twenty-seven thousand dollars for additional vehicle lease payments. An adjustment will also increase transfer from general fund within Fund sixty and appropriation of the general funds, Department sixty, wreck and parks, operating expenses.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Wait a minute.
Now, uh, we're gonna separately, we're gonna do it separately.
Separate, okay.
Yes. Second. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Amendment passes. Thank you. Go ahead, Joe.
Um, I would like to make another motion as follows. Decrease Executive Administration Fund oh-five by eleven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars in operating expenses. Decrease Community Promotions Fund oh-six by twenty thousand dollars in operating expenses. Per Charter Section seven oh-five F, in the event the council decreases any deleted, deleted any items, and the executive and the council do not agree upon the expenditure of the surplus, then upon adoption of the budget, the surplus shall be placed into the undesignated fund balance for future appropriation. It comes to thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Um, I would suggest if...
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Good, Joe.
May I have those amounts again, please?
Yeah. Eleven thousand, seven, seven hundred and fifty dollars in operating expenses, the county executive administration.
Okay.
And twenty, and, uh, Fund six, Fun, Fun oh-six, twenty thousand dollars in operating expenses for community promotion. And if we can't agree, I would suggest that that money goes to the landfill. If we can't agree on that, it can go into the, uh, designated fund balance.
Yeah, I think we'll worry about the cuts and, um, okay, we'll do that first. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I oppose.
Motion's carried. Um, amendment passes by a five-to-one vote.
All right, it's my turn.
And I, I don't know if that motion, um, also included, uh, what Councilman Holloway said.
Could you announce just...
I, Bunky Luftman, Director of Administration.
Thanks, Pam.
I don't know if that included moving that money to solid waste or not?
No, no.
Okay.
It was just a suggestion.
We, we can't.
Okay.
Probably can't do it.
Well...
We can't.
I didn't think so.
I, I highly recommend that we don't.
Okay.
It, it, let, let's put it this way. It could be done, I highly recommend we don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
James?
All right, I'd like to make a motion to amend Exhibit A, general fund revenue as follows. Reduce liquor control board revenue to four hundred thousand, which reduces service charges total to three million, two hundred and twenty-two thousand and eighty-three dollars. Reduce use of prior year fund balance to nineteen million, eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars, which reduces total miscellaneous revenues to thirty million, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seven hundred and, hold on, let me say that again. Thirty million, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars and seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Phew. Okay. Increase, uh, revenue for cannabis sales and use to twelve thousand, which increases other revenues total to six million, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. And then reduce total general fund revenue to two hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred, two hundred, two hundred and sixteen million, one hundred thousand and nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Motion's second. Um, I always have a lot of angst on this, again, on this increasing revenue, but I, I'm gonna leave it alone tonight.
The executive is, is fine with all of these changes, because this was agreed to at the last meeting. So there is no concern, the executive has agreed to all of these changes.
To worry about saying to president, we're actually voting on increasing revenue as opposed to making a recommendation, as we've done for the last fifteen years.
This is, um, modeled on last year, how we did last year.
Well, we made a mistake last year, I think. I just have reservations about this, so. Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Amendment passes unanimously. Shani?
Anticipated grant funding. I make a motion to amend Exhibit D, anticipated grant following, uh, grant funding as follows. Add a line for cannabis funds in the amount of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. This will be added to expected operating funds and increase the total in operating to one million, three hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And the total grant award for LMB will be two million, seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. Also, we need to adjust tourism total to one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Motion is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is the adjustment of tourism, is that an increase or a decrease?
It just was a mathematical error. I didn't have all of the lines summing, so I missed a line.
All right. Motion's second. Any discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Amendment passes.
Okay, position changes. I make a motion to amend Exhibit E, FY twenty-six budget request from departments. Position changes. Number one, change position number one, zero, 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 eight, to one, zero, 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 eight, eight, and position number one, zero, zero, seven, two, eight, to one, zero, zero, four, oh, seven. Second, change position number one, zero, zero, five, nine, two, salary from sixty thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars to fifty-seven thousand dollars, three hundred and twenty-one. And position number one, zero, one, zero, one, five, from fifty thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars to forty-eight thousand, three hundred dollars.
Motion is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Amendment passes unanimously. Joe?
Okay, capital bud, budget changes. I make a motion to amend the capital budget as follows. Remove the Health Department Verizon Building renovations from the general obligation bond amount. That's a reduction of two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Move the emergency services Pittsville Tower rebuild from FY two thousand twenty-six Pago to general obligation bond amount, and that's a move of one million, fifty thousand dollars. Move the Public Library, Flagship Library on Shoemaker Pond from FY twenty-six Pago to general obligation bond in the amount of eight hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars.
Motion is there a second? Second. We have a second. James, uh, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Amendment passes. Josh?
I guarantee I'm gonna screw this up.
I'll tap my ear if it's...
Is that part of your motion?
That is. I make a motion to amend Fund fifty-one, solid waste, as follows. Reduce revenue by one million, six hundred and fifty thousand for the reduction of the rates from a hundred dollars per ton to eighty-eight dollars per ton in January.
Yes.
Reduce contribution to fund balance by one million, three hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars for the combination of revenue reductions and expense adjustments by previously made. Increase revenue by one, by a hundred and fifty-three thousand, sixty-six dollars for use of fund balance.
Yes.
As a correctional, as a correction, as a correction of a mathematical error? Is that okay?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Addendum.
All right. Um, any, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Question I have is, um, Pam, with, um, with the cuts that Joe has recommended, will there need to be in addition, um, as a mathematical error on that to balance it?
So, um, since there hasn't been an agreement as to where it goes, it just drops to fund balance, and so I will, um, balance it out using fund balance.
So it won't be an unbalanced budget?
No, it will not be an unbalanced budget.
All right.
There will be another side.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Amendment passes unanimously. I think that's it. Any...
I think you need to vote on the actual bill then as a, okay.
Any, any further discussion or questions on the legislative bill and any of the amendments?
Yeah, I, I voted against the one because I, I just, I don't, we can increase our budget on a council level with no, no votes against us, um, but we can take from the executive office, and I, I don't think that's, uh, quite fair. So that's why I voted against it.
All right. Joe?
Um, James, that's, you're correct. Um, I completely agree with you, and that's why we get elected as council members, to do that.
Right.
Um, I would like to ask this question, um, our tax rate, what has it decreased?
It, it's in the next resolution.
Okay.
Um, the next, do, let's see, can I find that?
Okay, we can do that. We can do that in the next motion, okay?
Um, I don't, uh, the...
We'll do that.
Okay. It, it does decrease, I just can't find my resolution at this moment.
Yeah, it sounds like you've got plenty of time to, to...
Yeah, and I would say to your comment, James, you're a hundred percent correct, but it is how the people voted, when they, when they voted on this charter, they, they chose to give the council that authority.
There it is.
I understand.
So...
There's a few other inequities, but that's what...
This, um, this budget is balanced by decreasing the tax rate to eighty point nine nine cents for real property and decreasing the personal property tax rate to two dollars and two, two point zero two four seven per hundred dollars of assessed value. Um, by state law, uh, once, you may not have your personal property tax rate be more than two and a half times your real property tax rate. So last year, we had to decrease our personal property tax rate. This year, we have to decrease our personal property tax rate. And so this budget that you're voting on has those two dollar amounts built into it, those two rates built into it.
All right, thank you. So, um, you asked for comments?
Okay.
I'll say this, um, this council's not decreasing the tax rate, the people of Wacomico County are, by voting for the tax, um, revenue cap. No matter how we sit up here and how long we talk, we've worked through this budget, but in the end, the revenue cap is what keeps our taxes down. There's a politician, and I can't name him, I don't know if it was Ronald Reagan who made the comment, the only way you control how much money government spends is to control how much you give it. And we've had this conversation many times, but, um, the tax revenue cap is working in this case, and we still have money left over, so. this case, and we still have money left over, so. And if we have too much, maybe we could give some back to the citizens of the county.
It's kind of what we're doing. That's what we're doing. All right, any discussion? See none. All those in favor of adopting Legislative Bill 2025-2006 as amended, I will say aye through roll call. Joe Holland?
Aye.
Josh, yes, James?
Aye.
Shaney Shields?
Aye.
Jeff Merritt?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Legislative Bill 2025-06 passes unanimously as amended. All right. My.
Next is Resolution Number 76-2025. This is a resolution to levy and impose a real and personal property tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025 and ending June 30th, 2026.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. Um, my program crashed for a second there. And this is, um.
Page 326.
I got it. Yeah, I just had to bring it back up. Entertaining motion of council to approve Resolution 76-2025.
To move?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
If you'd like me to, I can repeat those.
Go ahead.
All right, at this point.
Yeah, I think the public should know what the rate was and what we've reduced it to.
Okay. Let me see if I, I, I'm not sure I brought the rate, I'm not sure I brought last year's rate with me. I can picture it on my desk, but let me see if I actually mentioned it in the, um, did I mention it, did we mention it in the, so, um, I'd have to do math, but we're reducing the tax rate for real property tax by 3.0369 cents. So we were at 84 cents and change last year. We're going down to .8099 per, uh, cents per $100 of assessed value for real person, for real property tax. And we decreased our personal property tax rate from 2.117 to 2.0247 per $100 of assessed value for personal property.
I think if anybody in the public recognizes how high their assessments have gone in the last year or two, they'd be glad to see any reduction in your tax rate, so. That's why we do it.
Mr. President?
Yes, Josh?
I just wanted to acknowledge, of course, that we, I'm glad we are able to lower taxes every year consistently for the residents. And I'm glad that we were able to balance our budget. I wish Congress did that. But I also want to acknowledge, you know, we do have, uh, the state of Maryland also balances its budget every single year. And, uh, you know, we do receive disparity grant funds, and I always bring that up, and I, Mr. President hates it when I do, but, uh, but in general, um, I just want to make sure we're all aware, too. You know, we could lose state funds, and that could be, you know, that's, that's made up between 7 and 11% of our budget. And so just acknowledging that with our revenue cap, we do have other challenges, and I'm hoping that doesn't come back to bite us in the future. But I'm very proud that we, every year, we are able to lower taxes. Thank you.
And at the same time, increase our credit rating?
Yes.
And increase our reserves. So, um, all the, any, any further discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 76-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Pam, thank you. Bunkie, thank you very much. All right. The moment you've been waiting for, at this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please state your name, your county residence, and your concerns.
My name is Mike Tillman. I am not a resident of Wycomico County. I'm a resident of Florida. However, that said, I was born and raised in Wycomico County. But I'm also a tenant at the airport. I have been for almost 40 years. And I'm sad to say, it's unfortunate to see what's happening to the T-hanger tenants. I know there's been a lot of discussion about minimum standards in the hangars, what can and can't be done. I've yet to see anything official. I have seen a copy of a letter that has come from the airport to the county suggesting what can and can't be done as far as use of mobile mechanics, what services can the owners and mobile mechanics can and cannot perform in the hangars. One of those items, as I understand it, was, one solution was to create an area for us to change oil. I've changed the oil in my hangar for 40 years, and there's never been a spill or anything of that nature. From what I understand, we're going to be moved outside to a concrete pad, so we'll change oil outside. That's going to be an interesting item to contend with, the weather, winds, et cetera. Probably have more spillage outside by doing, rather than by doing it in the hangar. That said, outside's on concrete, and the hangar's in concrete. So I, I'm not sure what this minimum standard issue is that's going on. Sounds like things have changed dramatically. As I said, I've been a tenant for just going on 40 years. And unfortunately, I'm sad to say, because of how this whole thing was handled with the T-hanger tenants and the lack of communication as to what we will and will not be allowed to do, I will be moving from this airport the end of this month. I will be relocating to another airport. My fear is that things seem to be becoming less and less general aviation friendly. And I, hopefully, that's not the intent, but that's the message that's being received. I want to be at, I want to be positioned at an airport that is GA, general aviation friendly. So that's what I've chosen to do. It's a personal choice. I applaud Azure. We need a viable FBO. We welcome them. No issues there. I think the issues are with the application and the enforcement of the minimum standards at the airport and how those things came about. So, that's my concern.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Forty years, you're probably the longest L C at the airport.
He is.
You and Ralph Brumley are like.
Ralph and I were neck and neck. Ralph left. My name is Ralph Capen. I'm a 20-year resident, Wycomico County. I am currently keeping my airport, my airplane, two hangars down from where Mike's getting ready to move to. When I first moved here, Wycomico County Airport did not have hangars available.
Did you mention your name? I'm sorry.
Ralph.
Did you mention your name?
Ralph, Ralph Capen.
I didn't know if you'd said that publicly. I'm sorry.
I, I thought I did.
You may have. That's probably me. Okay, sorry.
I apologize. Ralph Capen, 20-year resident here.
Oh, you did. I'm sorry.
And, and I've, have kept my airplane at the other airport, but now I am in the process of getting my instrument rating, and the Wycomico Airport has all kinds of great facilities, instrument approaches, fuel on the base, a brand-new FBO. Although I really liked the home feel of Bayland, they were a local entity, whereas Azure is a national company, we may not get that home feel anymore. But I'm hesitant to move my aircraft to this airport for the same reason that Mike is leaving. This application of standards is, is a killer for general aviation. I, as an aircraft builder, am certificated by the Federal Aviation Administration to perform all of the maintenance, oil changes, brake jobs, engine maintenance on my aircraft. And these standards would prevent me from doing that at the Wycomico Airport. So, just to help you understand, that's one of the reasons that I'm considering not moving here. I live here. It's eight miles from my house. It'd be a great commute to go to Wycomico County Airport instead of where I am now. Thank you.
Thanks, Capen.
Ava Trey, I'm in the process of moving to Wycomico County. I want to kind of add to what they had already said. I am an aircraft mechanic with my inspector authorization as well as a certified flight instructor. I got all these, and I moved my aircraft to Salisbury from Georgetown because, one, it's 10 minutes from my house. It's convenient. But now, I mean, I even just got a hangar a couple months ago for my second aircraft. But I'm thinking about moving them to another airport, because even though I do have the correct certifications in order to do all the maintenance on my aircraft, I am no longer allowed to do that. And I was also told that there was no hangars available for me to build a maintenance facility or a flight school myself. But yet, three of those commercial-sized hangars were given to the company Azure. So I, I mean, I know Tony said that there's a fair and equal playing field, and he's tried his best, but with three of those commercial hangars being given to a company that I don't know how long has been in the works, but I know that there's a list of eight people at least that have been on a list for a while now trying to get a large hangar. It, it's a concern to me, especially because the standards are so high for everything, and there's no facilities available. I'm 24 years old. I don't have a million dollars to build a new facility. I wish I did, and I wish I could get the opportunity to have that million dollars to build a facility somewhere else eventually. But right now, it's, I think a lot of people are thinking about moving away from this airport because of all of this.
Ms. Trey.
Joe Venosa, Salisbury. My apologies, because I'm the first speaker tonight who does not own an airplane, so. It is my favorite film, though, so, there is that. So just to, well, first off, congratulations to the council on getting the budget through. You could actually feel the room sort of get a little bit lighter after the vote, and I know you all know that, so, way to go. Just a couple of observations, because an article appeared on WBOC this evening as the meeting occurred. Because the executive is working hard for us in Bermuda this week, she did not give a direct quote on the budget, excuse me, on the hauling fee issue, but she didn't have this quote that I think people should know, and then I'll tie it into the bigger concern. This is a quote, quote, "These haulers were made aware that there would be increases last year and also at their biannual haulers meeting, which occurred six months ago. We really didn't have any idea of the price until we turned in the budget on April 15th, which, of course, was several months late anyway." If we look at the issue regarding this issue with tipping fees, if we look at the issue regarding the, you know, historical challenges of getting the revenue, the issue that seems to come up again and again is that the executive sort of springs these increases last minute on the haulers and on you, the council, and then you're left to pick up the pieces. And so I think that's something that the haulers need to be made aware of, and frankly, the public, is that a lot of these decisions are done because it seems that not only is there a lack of transparency, but as we're consistently seeing with regard to these kinds of issues, when they examine, excuse me, when they, um, expand out of the executive office, they don't actually give the public and the legislative branch a lot of time to deal with it and actually digest it. And so I, I, I hope people are aware of that issue. Lastly, I think one thing that would be maybe useful in the future is passing some kind of legislation that would actually perhaps mandate staggered increases. That way, we're in a position where we don't have any executive in the future spring a 10%, 20%, 30% increase over a few months, but you actually can manage it through legislation. So just a thought. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Venosa.
Chris Prosha again, Wycomico County. Just wanted to make a note, just to make the council aware, because of the, what was passed with the airport now, the airport is in violation of FAA Advisory Circuitally Section 1, Paragraph 2, Subsection C, concerning space limitations. Not going to read the whole thing, because it's really long, but just the beginning of it, it's, I'll say, "Single enterprise may expand as needed, even if the growth ultimately results in the complete occupancy of, of the space available. However, an executive rights violation occurs when an airport sponsor unreasonably excludes a qualified applicant from engaging in an on, on airport aeronautical activity without just cause." Part of that agreement was where Ms. Trey stated that the three possible facilities available for maintenance facilities have already been signed over to Azure with their lease. So the opportunity for anything to happen, which could happen, you know, these available facilities for maintenance purposes that are being used for maintenance, the, the, the ability for any, uh, mobile mechanic or a shop to start up does not exist anymore. The, the fairness across the board, and I apologize for not remembering the proper verbiage with that one, uh, coming from the airport was, you can build a facility to maintain aircraft. You're, you're looking at an easy million dollars, again, like Ms. Trey had stated. So with that happening, they are creating monopoly on the airfield because GA mechanics traditionally, GA mechanics don't get rich. They don't. That's the business corporate side. GA mechanics deal with, you know, figuratively speaking, the weekend flyer. You know, the folks that, you know, go through there, and you know, you find a $60,000 kit plane, you build it. You fly it, you have fun. You enjoy it. You know, a lot of folks that fly don't want to get dirty. That's where they go to the mechanics. Well, all the GA on Salisbury Airport now is being forced to go to, you know, a specific maintenance provider and cutting out the multiple mobile mechanics that are available in this county, in this general vicinity. And because of the, the handing over of the three facilities now, monopoly has been created because most folks in this general vicinity do not carry a million dollars in their pocket in order to build the facility. And if you own a couple hundred thousand dollar airplane, you need an engine swap, you want to stick it outside in the rain, snow, and now you're causing extra contamination and all that stuff which could cause accidents and death. Thank you.
If you could maybe email that section to the council, we'd appreciate that.
Absolutely.
It's on, if you go online, you can see where the email is to the county council as a whole.
Yes, sir.
Or to Mrs. Hurley. Thank you.
My name is Jerry DeCirano. I've been at the airport for 28 years, no, 29 years and eight months. Uh, I'm a former member of the Airport Commission. I was on it for about five years. So I'm here to talk.
Speak into the mic a little closer.
I'm sorry. How's this?
That's great.
Better. Okay. Very good. Thank you. So I want to talk to you about what it's like to be an aircraft owner. It's kind of like being a parent. You know, you don't really know what it's like to be a parent until you're a parent. And you don't really know what it's like to be an aircraft owner unless you are an aircraft owner. So I would hope that the council and Mr. Rudy and the executive would defer to us because we're the ones who know how to take care of our airplanes, and we know what is involved, what the challenges are, what the responsibilities are. So I'd like to take just a moment to tell you what it's like when we do a pre-flight inspection and find that the airplane fails the pre-flight inspection. What do we do? Well, we call a mechanic. Sometimes, how often does this happen, by the way? Well, certainly not every time, but I would say at least three times a year, I'll go out to my airplane and I find something that appears to be wrong. I'm not sure if it's wrong. It could be a problem. It might not be a problem, but I don't have the expertise to make that call. And I have to call a mechanic, and the mechanic's going to come into my hangar and look at the possible problem and say, Jerry, this is not a problem. You're fine. This is not a crack in the aluminum. This is a crack in your paint. Everything's fine. Or the mechanic is going to say, this is a real problem. I'll be back, you know, later this week, and I'll take care of it. I'm going to have to order some parts. Now, it is possible that, um, some people think, you know, we could fly our airplanes to another airport for maintenance, but that's not possible. If, if, if the airplane flunks its pre-flight inspection, it's illegal to fly it. And by the way, I don't want to get killed. And I don't want to kill anybody else. So there is no choice. And, and also, there are times when, depending on what, what is potentially wrong with the airplane, that you can't start the engine. That would be dangerous. And there are times you can't even taxi the airplane to, to the maintenance hangar. Now, Mr. Rudy's, oh, look at the time. Mr. Rudy's argument is that there's a chance of fire in the T-hangers. This is the thinnest excuse I've ever heard. We've been doing maintenance in the hangars for 50 years, and has there ever been a fire caused by a mechanic? Not that I know of. And we just read this as an excuse to push business to Azure. And by the way, Azure said they don't have a problem with the, with the tenants having maintenance done in their hangars. Thank you so much. I appreciate your listening.
Thank you, Steve.
Michael Stoffer, Superintendent of Schools. I'm joined by our Board Chair, Jean Malone. We just want to express our appreciation to the county executive for including the, our budget request and her budget proposal, as well as the county council for your thoughtful review, the questions that you ask, the meetings that you have with us each and every budget session. We appreciate that. This budget represents really more than numbers. I feel like it's a commitment that we have from our county council to over 16,000 or almost 16,000 students that we serve, to all of our educators and our dedicated citizens. staff. And again, we appreciate your time and consideration, everything that you've done to provide these resources for our school system this next year, and we'll continue to keep you updated on the progress that we're making. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Bob Van Meter, Mardella Springs, Wycomico County, Maryland. I want to applaud the council for their diligence and preparation of this budget, and I sincerely hope that there is allocation in there for Barron Creek Road to be replaced, or at least to start that process. It's long overdue. I thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Van Meter.
Charles Wright, Wycomico County, Mardella. Just want to echo same thoughts on Barron Creek Road. I want to make one statement to statements that several council members say, well, they've been without it this long. They got used to it. I don't get used to it at either time I go to the hardware store. I pull out on 50, cross 50, back, cross 50. Same way with all people on our side. They said the same thing about Mardella track. We waited and waited, waited, finally got a track. It's time to move the road along. If you go where we live, if you have to go around, go by the Mardella School in the morning, especially when school's dismissing, if you're wider than eight feet, you're not getting through there. You're wider than a car. If I'm coming down the road with a tractor, it's not happening. You can't get through there. This will be another avenue to skirt around. I might have to go around on 50, but at least I can get where I'm going. So I appreciate Mr. Wynn's efforts. His time, probably the most dedicated one on the council, to keep working at this, and I appreciate his efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Any other public comments?
David Kenny, Wycomico County, Mardella Springs, Hebron, multiple places. Just want to add on to what Charles said, my support for the road with the traffic, getting in and out of our store, our business. That would certainly help, especially our senior citizens that are trying to maneuver Route 50, crossing it. We have a lot of things in Mardella to be proud of, especially the school team that just won the states. And, you know, we have a great fire department that does a lot of activities. They need a source of water. They need an avenue to get across that road to get over to Route 54, to get to the school if they have to respond. Sheriff's Department needs another way to get over to the school. Right now, we're limited with railroad road and the traffic late on 54. If something happens at either one of those intersections, it's a mess, and it's unsafe. So this would certainly add some safety to that process. Thank you.
Good evening, councilmen. My name is Babek Razmju. Been a tenant for Wycomico County Airport for, I would say, 25 years, aircraft mechanic and owner. And this new lease is that saying that I cannot work on my own airplane or helping other peoples. It's just, for me, it's not acceptable. So I'd probably be looking for, to move out of the airport. So I urge you guys to look into it and get other people involved that know aviation or general aviation. That's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Razmju. Any other public comments?
Jim Atkins, Wycomico County. I guess I'm going to be the only one in opposition tonight, but I've been the only one before, so I can do it again. On May the 22nd, your county executive sat in here, addressed the council, and stated that they were looking for state or federal funds to build a bridge across Barron Creek Road. Knowing full well at that time that they're not looking for state or federal funds, they're looking for county funds because they're going to put a road in. They've already started working on putting the road in. One of the council members, in a display, I'm not quite sure how to describe it, admonished the other six council members that they voted to take Barron Creek Road out of the Maryland State Transportation Priority Letter last year. But what he failed to tell anybody was that it was in the initial letter this year, but the county executive took it out. So there was no admonishment to the county executive for taking it out of the priority letter this year, just the council members for doing it last year. And the reason the council did it last year was because at that point in time, for the previous seven years, nothing had been done on that road. So the council felt like, why are we keep asking the state to fix this road when we're not even doing anything about it? Now, there's $1.75 million in the CIP for 2027, supposedly to work on this road. There's $850,000 that was already approved. Of that $850,000, $357,000 has already been spent. Talking to county roads today, they don't have drawings, they don't have plans, they don't have permits. So if it costs $257,000 the first time to do it, I would think it's going to cost at least $257,000 again this year. So you're going to spend $800,000 getting the plans to put that road in. And this is where you got to start looking in the mirror, folks, because you're Charlie Brown and Lucy. Lucy's holding a football, and you're Charlie running up to kick it. She's going to spend $800,000, $850,000, and then come back to you next year and tell you she needs another 1.75 because she started the project, but it's not done yet, and we can't leave an unfinished project. Think about it and look
As everyone sees, I have to bend down a little bit. I'm 6'10". But my name is Colin McEvers. I'm a student at Salisbury University. I've been residing in the area for the past couple of years. Just for the public, I'd like to bring up an ongoing local initiative in Wycomico that I think applies to the county council and executive, and I believe it's pretty important. There's a petition currently that if it gets enough signatures, would impose term limits on the county council and the county executive. So it'd require about 10,000 signatures, which is quite a lot. But I've personally talked to a lot of people in the community at Third Fridays, from door to door and things like that. And a lot of people want to see things like term limits at the county level. It's really difficult to impose these things at the national level because it would need the vote of Congress and people in the legislature, which is difficult to do. But as people, we can put things like this on the ballot. I believe it may have come to the county council at one point, but didn't necessarily go through. But I think that it's an important thing. A lot of people want to see it. So I just wanted to bring this up to the public. And yes, thank you.
Philip Wheatley, Wycomico County, Mardella Springs, Riverton. Daily user of Barron Creek when it was there. Miss it a lot. I go up to Route 50 almost every day and watch that stoplight being run by trucks and different vehicles. When my kids were learning to drive, I always told them to sit there at that Mardella stoplight till everybody stops. I would really appreciate if the county would look strong at getting the road replaced. It's something that I used on a daily basis commuting to Salisbury, and it's also my back access to the hardware store, my favorite place to shop.
Which hardware store is that? Which hardware store?
The hardware store, the only one. The hardware store.
Needs a plug. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wheatley.
Good evening, council. Monica Brooks, resident of Wycomico County and also president of Wycomico County NAACP. I don't have anything negative to say today. Isn't that great? But I do want to say I am excited to see what our school board will be able to do with this funding, this new funding that they have greatly needed for so, so long. And we have had a huge shortage of teachers. I think currently, we're probably in the state of Maryland about 2,000 or 3,000 short of teachers currently in the school system. But beyond that, the support that they need to help with the ESL students, as well as the students with disabilities, bringing in assistance, et cetera, et cetera. So Wycomico County NAACP has always been a strong advocate for education. We will be holding a discussion on restorative schools on this Thursday. Anyone can join in. It's going to be virtual. You can go to our Facebook page, NAACP Wycomico County. This is not about charter schools. This is about all of the schools, getting assistance and tools to handle areas of mental health, and providing teachers and faculty with the assistance that they need to make sure that all of our students are super successful, and that our teachers are not stressed out because, I don't know if you know, but many of them are leaving the school system because they don't have what they need. In our school system, I don't know how you do it, Dr. Stoffer. But Dr. Stoffer knows how to stretch a dollar. He does not, the amount of staff that he has and the amount of resources that he has, he is doing the best that he can to stretch it as much as possible. But this funding, which I thank the council for, is going to help go a long way. And hopefully, this will be consistent with, and I know county executive put it in the budget, county executive, and the council approved it. So just want to say thank you for that, and hope you all will join us in this discussion to be a part of the solution, and have a great evening.
Any other public comments? Council comments?
Well, it's always good to get through the budget. Like gentleman said, it's kind of like, you know. Mike, thanks for coming up. We had a conversation the other day on the telephone. I'd really hate to see you leaving our airport. And, you know, one thing I've, this is my fourth county executive I've had experience with. I was in the retail business for a number of years, and one thing I learned is you had to treat people right if you expected them to come see you again. And it seems like in the past two or three years, it's one group after the other that's at that podium complaining about the way they get treated. I think that some of the other council members and myself will agree that we just were waiting to see who else is going to show up. You know, we get through one thing, we try to get one problem solved, then something else comes up. This thing with the airport, I served on the airport commission a number of years ago, and they did not care about general aviation whatsoever. The history of the airport goes back to the early 40s, and it was basically started, it was sold by a gentleman named Ward to the county, and it was started through general aviation. There wasn't commercial flights at that airport. General aviation carried that airport for many a year. Richard Henson came to Salisbury as a general aviator, and that's where Salisbury Airport really got its boost. So to disrespect general aviation people, I think is a sin. It really is. And hopefully, next week, next meeting, we won't have a new issue to face. We faced it tonight with the haulers. Like I said earlier, you know, they were surprised last time they had to deal with a tipping increase. And everybody says, oh, it's the haulers. They're going to just make more money, you know. Well, they have to pass that on. It's going to be the people along the road with these little trashcans that they pick up that's going to be paying the bill. The hauler's not going to lose probably because they're going to have to raise their fees. So we'll wait and see who complains next week about something. Thank you.
Yeah, as Joe said, shoo, the budget. I do want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. It's always good to hear what the public has to say about the issues in our county. There's always something happening. I do want to thank the council staff for their amazing work and support during the budget and CIP process. I think I lost count of the emails about six weeks ago. So Laura, Lynn, and Angely, we couldn't do what we do without you doing what you do. So thank you. I want to publicly acknowledge that. The airport, appreciate everybody coming up and talking about that. I just hope we can arrive at a place where we can all get along together. For businesses to forget where they came from, that's not a good, you can ask Harley Davidson how that worked out for them, and the struggles that they are still going through. They forgot where their core market was. And should this relationship with Azure go away at some point, if you've had all of your GA people gone to other airports, you have what's known as a ghost town. So I hope we can figure out a way to all get along together. From the emails and contracts and stuff that I've seen, there's no problem with Azure. They just want to come in and get along. So I hope that can happen. As you can see in the budget, we've got a lot of expensive projects on deck and a few that are less expensive. And we need to think about prioritizing these projects on the cost versus the impact on the citizens. Do we have a plan? Do we have a timeline? Is there a cost projection? Who's responsible for the funding? Several people came up and talked about Barron Creek Road tonight. Whether the road gets fixed or doesn't get fixed, the fact remains, we have nothing. We don't know what the plan is. We don't know what the timeline is. We don't know how much it's going to cost, and we don't know who's going to pay for it. If we could get that information, maybe things would be different. We talked about the landfill tonight and how expensive that is, the water sewer master plan that's still being put together. That's millions, lots of millions. The county EMS system that's been proposed, that's a starting price tag of $8 million. We've got a lot of things to pay for. Landfill affects every citizen in this county. County EMS system, same thing. County EMS system, same thing. I do want to give a shout out to Tracy Taylor and the Planning and Zoning Department and the Code Enforcement Team. I've been dealing with a repetitive issue with somebody that likes to collect trash in their yard. For whatever reason, we don't know, but it's creating quite a number of complaints. And I forwarded an email that I received two days ago to Tracy, and within 24 hours, it was taken care of. So I do want to give a shout out to them. The response I got back from Tracy was, thank you very much, we're small but mighty. And they are. So they don't have enough people and they got a lot of complaints they have to deal with. So shout out to them. I want to congratulate all of the high school and college graduates. It's graduation season. A lot of people walking across these stages, getting diplomas, moving on to the next chapter in their life. President Cannon and I sat through the graduation at Warwick and listened to the accomplishments of a lot of those young men and women. And wow, how cool is that? They're going on to great things, and that's the future of our country, walking across those stages. So very proud of them, and we wish them best wishes on their next adventure. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Ms. Shaney?
I just want to say, I want to thank Monica Brooks and Wycomico Environmental Trust for making Waterside Park now a better place. Because when I was on the city council, that big piece of equipment, I was advocating for that when I lived in the city. And I'm seeing the way it's coming to life. I think they planted 126 trees, and from what I understand, they're going to do a walking trail. Am I correct? So I think that's an asset to that part of town. And I always, just like Indian Village in the county where I now live, it's, things should be more family-friendly, inclusive. We talk about our children playing in the streets and going, being bad, but they don't have anything to do. So if they have, when I was coming up as a little girl, we had a playground on Delaware Avenue, and we would go home for lunch and come back, and it was open all day, free of charge. And the women in the neighborhood funded this program. It was called Friendly Benefit Playground. And I think we need to take, instead of downing our kids all the time, we need to make sure that our children have something structured to do in the summertime because everybody can't afford to be in these programs. I was looking at the fees they charge, it's not for even middle-class people. Even Salvation Army is expensive. So I do want to compliment you on doing that, partnering with the trust for doing that for Waterside Playground. Also, as Jeff said, we need to know how to treat people. And I feel, I always said this, I believe to treat people the way you want to be treated. And when I hear things like what's going on at the airport, I don't think it's fair. I don't agree with it. I don't have an answer. But when you see people leaving the community that's been doing this for 40, 29 years, over 25 years, and they're just talking about leaving, that's almost like someone's moving out your community because something's not going right. And we should try to work things out with both sides. So if Azure says they can work it out, I'm hoping it can be worked out because that's a very inconvenience for people who have to move their aircraft somewhere else. And I hate to see that. But I'm glad to see everyone here tonight. And I just thought it was going to be a lot of comments when I saw the people. But anyway, that's about all I have to say.
Thanks, Shaney. Josh?
I don't want to pile on. Everyone's made great comments here. I just want to be very brief and just say thank you all for being here tonight. We really appreciate that. I know, and getting through the budget and some of these things are really challenging. I appreciate everyone working through that, especially the administration and our staff. We really do appreciate that. I do want to give a special thank you to Dr. Stoffer and all the folks, you know, the work that you're doing with our schools. I've got the quote here, "Dr. Stoffer can stretch a dollar." Thank you, Monica. That is true. And you really do, you do a great job for our schools, and I really appreciate that. And thank you, President Malone, too. And then I just want a special shout out to two people and to their families. That's Mr. Kenny Robinson, and thank you. He's my T-ball coach, I said almost 40 years ago. He's got a fantastic family, who's always just a wonderful human being. And then same thing with Mr. Phil Wheatley, who I've known for a very, very long time, also a wonderful family. So two people who are very important to me, who I acknowledge are just wonderful. And I just want to let you know, I appreciate who you are and all you've done. Thank you.
James?
That was very nice, Josh.
We already topped that one, huh, James?
Well, I'm just going to comment, the young lady is 24 years old and has two airplanes. I mean, that's, what was I doing at 24? You know? Congratulations. I don't, you know, I really hope we can, as a county airport, maybe work better with our, with our leases in the future. And I hope that, I hope that changes, and I think the council would agree with that. I thank everybody from Mardella coming and speaking up for what you believe in and what you need in your community. I know that the priority letter is actually in Mardella's name now. It's not in the county's name. So yeah, it's not, it's not county, but it is, it is a thing. And the town of Mardella has it in their letter for support for a bridge from the state. So we'll see what happens. No promises, but I'm trying. Thank you.
Mr. President, for comments, I would reiterate a lot of what's been said tonight. We do have concerns as far as the aviation issue that we're faced with right now. We have been trying to work very diligently with the executive branch and with management to try to get some, bring some resolution to that. Azure, I think, will be an excellent partner. I know Mr. Cape and you'd expressed concerns not knowing who they are, but they are probably one of the, in meeting with them, I found them to be one of the most engaging owners I had ever met with. And they're very down-to-earth, and they do respect 100% all the aviation pilots and what each of you do in your hangar. So the issue we have to address is Wycomico County's opinion and Wycomico County's position in addressing those same concerns. As far as Barron Creek is concerned, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of issues that always come about, I think. And I feel the council always seems to come up in a defensive mode. The council is not suggesting that we do want Barron Creek to be put back together. We don't want Barron Creek. I mean, none of the council members, I think, have really come to that conclusion as of just yet. I've stated in the past that I do support putting Barron Creek back where, how it used to be. I've stated that since Bob Culver was the county executive. The question is, how? And in the comments that I hear, there are comments like, well, you need to make sure you put it in. Well, we understand that 100%. It's the process that the council has reservations on, if there's any reservations whatsoever. And that is no different than with the Fruitland Primary School. When we knew that Fruitland Primary School was going to cost $48 million. And at the time, when it was either, I guess, in the CIP or the budget, there was some miniscule number of maybe $4 million, I guess, 4.5, put in for just one year. And we said, well, this is a CIP. If this is a five-year plan, where's the other $43 million? We just want to see that. That's why it's called a plan. Well, that's what we have here. We have $1.75 million dropped into 2027 as it. We're not even sure what the $1.75 is going to be spent on. We don't know if it should be $3 million. We don't know if it's going to be a road or if it's going to be a bridge. So is it $3 million or is it $30 million? So, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't really want to see the council criticized for the fact that we're really just trying to do our due diligence and saying, please tell us what this is for before we make any type of a commitment. You can't go to a bank, and you can't ask that bank to give you a loan for $1.75 million because you want it. You have to have a plan, you have to have a document just for that figure alone. Forget the fact that we're probably talking a minimum of $3 million. So that's where we are. I hope we do come to some resolution on that. It's sort of like it's been stuck in limbo, and the council has made so many requests as to where are we, what are we doing, how much is the county going to spend, how much do you think that the state's going to spend? Has MDE come down here yet to evaluate the road? I witnessed the dam in Fruitland on their division street. I sat in a meeting when they came down and said it was going to be $600,000. And I know we spent, ended up spending at least $3 million. And it was, it was at least a year or two that that road was completely closed. So those are the things that we're trying to avoid right now. And if you're wondering why the council shows reservation, it's only because we're doing our due diligence, and we're trying to make sure that we do the right thing for the citizens of the county, period. And to make sure that the budget and the CIP is done the way it's supposed to be done properly. So that being said, I have to adjourn from legislative session and go into closed work sessions pursuant to the local government article, section 3-305B1, to discuss candidates for Assistant Director of Administration, candidates for District 3 Council seat, and candidates for the Compensation Analysis Commission to protect the privacy of the individuals. That's a motion.
The move.